Well, we won't have to until I'm... I'm sorry, are we ready?
Like the Iredell County Board of Commissioners, regular meeting for Tuesday, December the 17th, 2024, our six o'clock meeting. At this time, I would like to ask Commissioner Brown to give us the invocation for the Board of Commissioners as we seek guidance and wisdom in the work we are about to do for the citizens of Iredell County.
Heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you once again for giving us the opportunity, Lord, to serve you. We thank you for bringing us here safely tonight, Lord. We thank you for this month, for this coming week, what it means to so many of us, Lord. Thank you for sending your Son to die on the cross. Lord, we just have so many things to be thankful for, but we have so many people out here that need help. And, you know, we were just discussing a few minutes ago about a family that their house burnt down this week and that they lost all of their presents. And, you know, that means so much to so many people, but they still have you. And we ask you to bless them, take care of them, and let us ones that can help them reach out and touch them, Lord. We ask you to be with us tonight as we're doing our duty here in this county. Bless each and every one of the people that came here, Lord. Ask you just to help us to have a safe journey home, for us in Christ's name is sake. We do pray. Amen.
Amen. I'd like to ask Commissioner Haupt to lead us in a pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to ask the county manager, do we have any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, we do have a few adjustments. The first item is an addition under administrative matters, and that'll be item 8.10, and that's a request from United Racing Parts to amend the existing incentive agreement. The next is to add commissioner updates, and that will be right before new business. We inadvertently left that off the agenda, so I apologize for that. And then the last adjustment will be the removal of economic development from closed session. We don't have anything this evening for economic development.
To approve the agenda.
Make a motion.
Motion by Commissioner Stroud, all in favor, say aye. Any oppose? Agenda is approved. Going down the list tonight, we don't have any presentation awards anything tonight, correct?
Correct, that's correct.
Okay, and this will take us into the appointment before the board, and I'll turn it over to the county manager.
Absolutely, thank you, Mr. Chair. We do have one item under appointment before the board, and that's the presentation of our audited June 30th, 2024 financial statements. And Ms. Caroline Taylor is here to present our auditors that are going to provide the presentation.
Our Martin Starnes and Associates team has gone through our 2024 financial information and all of our policies, and Cassie Wilson is here to present our financial report for 2024.
Welcome.
There we go. Good evening, thank you for having me. I am with Martin Starnes and Associates, we've been your auditors for a few years now, and I have been the lead auditor for the last few audits that we have done. And I will go through the audit highlights for June 30th, 2024. So, we issued an unmodified opinion, that is a clean opinion on the financial statements. That's the highest quality opinion that we can give you. There was a significant increase in the programs tested for single audit this year. That's just due to the amount of federal awards that were expended from two that were additional and to get your state coverage that was required for the state's single audit piece. So you can see that we went from five programs being tested last year to up to 11 programs that were tested this year. The financial statements have been sent to the LGC and they have been approved, so we have final copies of the report. Just to bring to your attention what the governmental accounting standards boards, which is GASP, what they're doing right now, there continues to be an increase in the complexity with the reporting standards. You can see we've issued, they've issued quite a few standards the past few years. Most recently, it was the GASP 100. That was just some presentation changes and the way they called any kind of restatement and how that affected the presentation and the financial statements for those. And then we look forward to next year with GASP 101, which is on compensated absences and that additional liability being reported. Now, we'll look at the general fund, fund balance and that change. So you can see that you had an increase from 2023 to 2024. Some of that is the reflection of different changes in your revenues and expenditures that you had from 2023 to 2024, but we'll talk about your revenues and expenditures in the general fund as we go forward. The LGC looks specifically at the available fund balance and how that calculation is over the course of several years for you and compare you to other units as well of similar general fund expenditures. So you can see the available fund balance for 2024, that was $174,278,595. That was an increase, which was expected with the increase in your overall fund balance for the general fund. Now, when you look at your fund balance as a percentage of those general fund expenditures, this is a percentage that the LGC also uses for a lot of comparatives. Your available fund balance percentage is 60%, but I know you're very specific in what you want to look at, and we want to take out anything that is not just restricted, but what is committed and what is assigned. And then that takes your coverage to 29%. So for the general fund summary, you can see both revenues and expenditures did increase. When we break that down and we look at your revenues by function, you have your property taxes at 62%, other taxes and license at 20%, restricted intergovernmental, that is 5%, and then your other category of 13%. You can see we put up there in the top corner what your 2023 percentages were, and that other revenues include your unrestricted intergovernmental. It's still federal and state, but it's not restricted for purpose. Then you have sales and services, your permits and fees, the investment earnings, and then some miscellaneous revenue in there as well. This is the increase in ad valorem taxes from June 30th, 2023 to 2024. The other taxes and license was pretty comparative to the prior year. That is where your local option sales tax is. The restricted intergovernmental, federal and state awards, most of this is tied to specific expenditures for those programs as well. So you can see that there was a slight decrease from 2023 to 2024 with the changes with different funding, ARPA funding, some of that COVID funding coming down and being spent. So you can see how that changed a little bit. Now, for your expenditures specifically, we have public safety at 25%, the debt service at 11%. Remember with your debt service, if you are comparing this with education as well, which education by itself is 35%, but that education doesn't include the debt service related to education. So when you look at those two combined together and the debt service piece that's related to that, you end up with about 45% of your general fund expenditures going towards education and the debt service for that. And then your human services being at 15%. Education, again, this doesn't include the debt service, this is just education, capital outlay for them and current expense, everything that you've budgeted specifically to education that had a significant increase from 2023. And then your debt service overall decreased from June 30th, 2023 to 2024. The human services category, that did have an increase. A lot of the human services is tied to your federal and state expenditures, health department, social services, all of those areas. So where you see that expenditure, you usually have related revenues to cover that. Public safety also had an increase for the year. And then your solid waste disposal facility fund, these are just some captions of what the year ended with. You can see that you did have a positive net operating income, and then you can see your cash flows provided by operations was also positive. So those are good things and specific things that the LGC looks at. For the EMS special services fund, the net operating income there was also positive, and then you also had a positive cash flows provided by operations, so that's also great to see. That's the snapshot of where things ended for 630, 2024. I would just like to take a minute to thank the finance department, everybody that's answered all the emails, all the department heads that have answered questions for us, social services department, health department, everybody working with us and being diligent, getting us the information was what led to us being able to get everything done timely and submitted and a clean opinion. They worked very hard to get to this point, and we really appreciate our relationship with you and working with you to get to this point. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Anybody have anything?
I would just like to see in next year's, you know, on your footnotes on everything is just be very particular on the breakdown of each category and as far as revenues and expenditures of where it's going, where it's coming from.
Okay.
And I think that's easier when you look at it and if the public sees it, makes a whole lot more sense to them instead of guessing about, you know, where that money's going or what it's being spent for, if you can just be a little more specific on everything.
Okay. And typically, in your management's discussion and analysis section of your financial report, if they were to look at that, they're going to see a lot of that, this is what changed from last year to this year to cause that increase. So, but we can make sure that we put some more specifics in here.
Okay, thank you.
You got anything else?
I do want to point out a couple of things because this seems to be something that we get a lot of questions about, but if you look at the fund balance slide, remember that we are, we're going to try to do a pay-go for the new elementary school. So each fiscal year, we're setting aside $10 million to go towards that elementary school that we know is coming. We also have delayed projects that we had already had funded that were for the county, delaying that, waiting to see what was going to happen with the high school. So that's why you see that increase in that fund balance. And because we are a pay-go county, we save money, then we pay cash for it, so you're going to see big fluctuations in our fund balance. So right now, we're in saving mode, and then when the elementary school hits, you're going to see that drop again because we'll pay cash for it. So that is, you know, that's, not all counties do that, but we do that. So that's why you're going to see big dips up and down with fund balance depending upon where we are in our capital process and if we have enough money saved up for that for a specific purpose. We do have, and Cassie was saying earlier, we have certain projects that we're saving up money for, so we have different pots of money that we're saving for different projects. And when we reach that amount for saving that money, then we would pay cash for it, and you'll see that dip in our fund balance. But that is something we typically get a lot of questions on, and I just wanted to, I know the board knows that, but maybe since we have a great audience here, it's good to point that out so everybody understands.
And we have no idea what the interest rate's going to be on the high school borrow or the bonds either?
No, we don't. So, and if you remember, we have an $80 million bond that was approved in 2020, but we're also going to go out and borrow another 40 to put with it. So that's, that's another reason that we've got that big fluctuation up and down.
And I think to your point, you know, when we do our retreats and stuff, we see our capital outlay and planning, but something like this doesn't give a full picture of that. It's just helpful, and that's what I was mentioning, sometimes when you put it perspective, it lets people know what that's for, and that's not just money sitting there that could be used anywhere. It's, most of the time, a lot of it's allocated.
We're saving it for specific projects, like, for example, the new elementary school. We're setting aside $10 million a year for that with hopes to pay cash for it. So those are, those are things that, that is included in that fund balance number.
And keeping our rate where it's at, too.
Yes.
Saving the interest payment on $40 million allows us to keep the tax rate lower.
Right.
Anything else?
I just want to say thank you to, to our auditors, to Cassie, they do a great job. They come in and hunker down in the conference room, and they are working around the clock. So they, they provide a great service, and they're not afraid to ask questions. So our staff have been great, our finance team has been wonderful. A lot of our departments, specifically DSS and Health Department, that receive state and federal funding as well, they, they put them through the wringer, and I'm thankful to say that they, they do a good job, so.
They do an excellent job.
And, you know, from our standpoint, is having no questionable charges, no, so kudos to our staff as well.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And with this, do we have a motion to accept the audit?
Some of...
Motion by Commissioner Haupt, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries. We'll now go down the list to the public hearings, and I will turn it over to the county manager to kick this off.
Absolutely, thank you, Mr. Chair. Matthew Todd is here to present, we have a road closing public hearing that we're going to hold. General statute says we have to advertise it three consecutive times, which has occurred, and now we're going to have the public hearing, and I'm going to hand it over to Matthew Todd to go through the details of it.
Good evening to the board. As was stated, if you remember, in November, we came to you to request that a public hearing be held, the property owners, the applicant, or the applicant on this request, and it's three different properties. If I can get it to pull up here, you also, here we go. Property was posted back in November and has been advertised in the paper three consecutive times per the statute requirements. There's a lot of these old, I'll say crescent lots or old lots on the lake that have these little stub outs. This one in particular, the three parcels in blue have been purchased by the same owner, and they are requesting to abandon the right of way. What we typically look for is to make sure that a parcel's not going to be landlocked. The parcel that would currently be landlocked, they're reconfiguring the lots, so all the lots will have direct access up to Robinson Road, so there would be no issues with the approval of this request, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Is that a requirement to make that access before we would approve the closing of the road? Or is that, I'm saying, do we have authority to make that, make sure that happens, but when we do this agreement, if we voted for this tonight?
I'm not sure that I follow the question.
I guess you're saying that they're going to reconfigure the three lots to where the one is not landlocked if we close the road. I'm saying, is that a condition of this?
So, yeah, the approval process, the way it works is the right of way actually splits down the middle.
Right.
Between all adjacent, any property that owns it.
Right.
But because all three of these have the same ownership, they're going to take it a step further and recombine it beyond what typically would happen.
Okay.
So, yes.
So it's going to be all one lot?
No, they'll still be three separate. Well, that right of way will essentially be tied into the address at 259.
Okay.
So the abandoned roadway piece will go with that middle lot, which will give it access to the road, correct?
Correct. And they've already had a survey plat done to show that.
Okay.
Any make any other questions? Good. Okay, I'd like to take a moment and call for a public hearing for the closure of, how do you say that word, Matthew?
I'll let you try it.
There you go. Lane, public road right of way located off Robinson Road, State Road 1396 in Mooresville, North Carolina, and consider adopting an order to close said road per general statute 153A-241. I'd like to ask at this moment if anyone is in attendance that would like to speak on this matter. Yes, just go up and just say your name and tell me your address.
My name is Wilton Connor, my wife Catherine and I own the three properties. And that's my comment is to compliment the employees of the county. I ended up speaking to five different employees, and had I known where to start, I wouldn't have, it wouldn't have been that many people. But my point is that each person that I spoke to was professional and helpful and knew what they were speaking to, and it certainly is appreciated as a citizen of Iredell County. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Anyone else here to speak on this matter? Hearing no more, seeing no more, I will close the public hearing, and I'll ask if we have a motion.
Make a motion to accept the closure for the public road right of way that's listed on here.
Motion by Vice Chair Neder, all those in favor say aye. Any oppose? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Matthew. And going down the list, it comes over to the administrative matters, I'll turn it back over to the county manager.
Thank you, I'm sorry. The following items were reviewed at our four o'clock pre-agenda meeting, and it was agreed by unanimous consent with the board to place it on the consent agenda. The first item was a request from Mooresville Graded School District for approval to amend the Selma Burke Middle School capital project ordinance by transferring funds within the project. There was a request from the sheriff's office to approve a five-year service add-on to the Axion ALPR, which is Automatic License Plate Reader Agreement, for the current in-car camera system. A request from emergency communications to approve budget amendment number 29 to appropriate ARP-enabled fund balance for a change order for the eighth additional tower site in the Viper simulcast system, and this will provide additional coverage to the western part of the county. A request from emergency management to enter into a three-year agreement with OnSol for reverse 911 software, and this is a three-year agreement in the amount of $21,000, and this will replace the Hyperreach software that we have, which is currently more expensive than this software. A request from fire services to approve and adopt the expansion of the Shepherd's Fire Insurance District to now include what was previously the Wayside Fire Insurance District. There was a question, this can be changed depending upon the outcome or recommendations of the consultant, but this needs to be done so Shepherds can begin providing fire protection to the Wayside District. A request from administration to approve budget amendment number 28 for a judicial space needs assessment, which will begin in January. A request from tax administration for approval of the November 2024 releases and refunds. A request from administration to approve the 2025 Board of Commissioner meeting dates. A request from administration for, to approve the minutes from the meeting on November the 19th, 2024, which is our Board of Commissioner meeting. And then there was one item that was added to the consent agenda, and that was a request from United Racing Parts, which is known as Project Crew, to amend existing, the existing incentive agreement. Their improvement period date was December 31st of 2024, and that was agreed to amend it to December 31st, 2025. So all of those items were reviewed by the board in detail, and it was agreed to place those items on the consent agenda.
Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda items?
Make a motion.
Motion by Commissioner Stroud, all those in favor say aye. Any oppose? Motion carries. Now brings us down to the announcement of vacancies occurring on boards and commissions. County manager, I'll let you have it back there.
I will say that we did an announcement earlier of several different boards and commissions where we have vacancies, and we are really looking for volunteers, and I'm taking a liberty because we have a lot of visitors in our meeting this evening. So I would ask anybody that's interested in volunteering to please check our website and see all the different boards and commissions that are available. We have several, three, I think, that's on our Board of Adjustment. We have, we have Recreation Advisory Board, we have Region F Aging Council, we have very, varies, varies, I guess from A to Z as far as boards and commissions that we have. If anybody is interested in serving and volunteering in that capacity, please check our website. If you want more information on the different boards and commissions, contact our clerk to the board, Mr. John Bess. He can give you more detail about it and get an application. So that's my shameless plug, since, since we have a group here with us this evening. But hopefully, we will have some additional applications to present to the board at our, at our meeting in January.
Now brings us down to appointments to boards and commissions, and I think we have one, correct?
We do have one, and this one is a little, a little unique in the fact that we have two ETJ appointments for the city of Statesville. We have one that we did previously for the Board of Adjustment, which is an ETJ representative. And for anybody that doesn't know, ETJ is that extraterritorial jurisdiction, that they're not inside Statesville's corporate limits, but they are right outside in that ETJ area. So we had an opening on the Statesville Planning Board for that ETJ representative, and we have not had any applicants for that because it has to be an individual that lives in that ETJ. The individual that applied and is currently serving on the Board of Adjustment in that ETJ capacity has volunteered to serve on the planning board as well. So because we do want to make sure that there's representation and a voice that's in that ETJ area on both the planning board and Board of Adjustment, since we have not had any other applicants, I'm bringing this application to the board for consideration to appoint this individual to serve on the planning board as well.
Do we have a motion to approve Josh Goodwin to the Statesville Planning Board ETJ?
Some of...
Motion made by Commissioner Haupt, all those in favor say aye. Any oppose? Mr. Goodwin is approved.
And I just want to thank him for, for volunteering to do that. He sees the importance of being that voice, and I have a lot of respect for him being willing to serve on both.
On both boards.
Absolutely.
And he's going to be beneficial for...
I just think he's, I think he's crazy.
We appreciate him being willing to serve.
One, one's crazy, two's just plum crazy.
Oh, and Mr. Bess, we need to update our application at the bottom. Look, our application is outdated.
It's been updated. Yeah, this is an old one.
Okay.
Okay, now brings us down to unfinished business. Anyone have anything?
I'll just say, just for anybody watching, because there was a couple inquiries that we have asked Lisa to look into the peddlers and solicitation ordinance that we have and give us some feedback in January as to potentially changing hours, so they know we're working on it.
Anyone got anything else? We now jump down to the public comment period. The public comment period is conducted by the board, the second meeting, regular meeting of each month. The purpose of the public comment period is to allow citizens to speak on matters related to county government. Each speaker that has signed up is allotted to three minutes and will be called to the podium by the chair in the order the names appear on the sign-up sheet. Please state your name and address before beginning your comments. Comments are to be directed to the board as a whole. Responses by the board are at their discretion, but the public comment period is not intended to be a question and answer period, but rather a time for the board to hear from the public and to take such matters raised under advisement. Citizens will be expected to be civil in their language and presentation and not engage in slander or name-calling. Citizens should not discuss any matters which are closed-session matters, including but not limited to matters regarding personnel or matters which are made confidential by law. Speakers who have prepared written remarks or supporting documents are encouraged to leave a copy of such remarks and documents with the clerk board. I will now open up the public comment period, and our first person that signed up is Jerry Britton. And I'm sorry if I say the names wrong, I'm sorry. If you will, just state your name and your address.
Thank you. I got some bad directions out, they told me downstairs, I wasn't even signed in, so I'm pleasantly surprised. My name is Jerry Britton, I live at 132 Four Winds Drive, which is in the Maple Creek subdivision about two miles north. miles north of the auto auction. Uh, I am a retired Navy officer and moved from Northern Virginia to Statesville in 2007, and I have been dealing with an issue now for about six years. There is a house, and it, the house that I'm asking about is 1084 Turnersburg Highway. There are thirty-something abandoned vehicles there, there are boats. The only thing that I don't see there is an airplane. There are boats, there are trailers, there are commercial buses, there are ATVs, and I have gone to two different, uh, people requesting that that be, uh, addressed. I received a phone call three days ago that there is a variance or some sort of meeting next month where that is specifically going to be addressed. But if you've not been there, it's the first property right by the abandoned prison, but there's somewhere between thirty and forty abandoned vehicles and boats and planes and trains there.
We will have staff to get in contact with you, sir.
All right, is there, is there a date? Someone called and said there was some sort of hearing next month. Does anybody?
We've got your, uh, address and.
Yes, sir.
I've got your phone number, and we'll have staff to reach out to you.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very, very much.
Thank you for your service to the Navy.
Yes, sir. Next person, I think, is Arliece Green. Did I get that right?
Hello, everyone. Thanks to the board for letting me come out and present the SBA Disaster Program. My name is Arliece Green. I'm a public affairs specialist with the Office of Disaster Recovery and Resilience of the U.S. Small Business Administration, FOC East, and I'm here today to introduce two programs that we have for your, um, community, the survivors of Hurricane Helena. Um, the first program we have is for physical damages. Homeowners, landlords, renters, business, and nonprofit organizations are eligible to apply. Um, for the homeowners, they can borrow up to $500,000, renters up to $100,000, up to a 30-year term, um, no payment for 12 months or interest. And then we have another program, which is called Economic Injury for Business Owners and Nonprofit Organizations. They do not have to have any physical damages. The damages comes in loss of revenue. Um, if they, if your businesses did not receive physical damages, the neighboring community may have received those damages, and it tends to trickle down. It takes a business six months to a year, or maybe even longer, to figure out that they have been impacted by this injury. Now for that, the business can borrow up to $2 million, and again, up to 30-year, no payments for 12 months, no interest. And with both programs, you can borrow up to $50,000, that's with no collateral, and a business owner can apply three times if he received physical at his home, physical at his business at a different location, and economic injury, and therefore he can get the $150,000 with no collateral. Um, we do have other programs such as mitigation, relocation, refinance, um, they're on the handouts that I have presented to you. Uh, for a person to apply for this, they will go sba.gov/disaster. They can call the customer service number at 1-800-659-2955. At this time, I will open the floor for any questions or any concerns. Okay, I will leave a couple of the handouts downstairs at the table, and, um, Mr. Bess has my information. If you have any questions or concerns, feel free to call me, and I'll be more than happy to assist you. Thank you again.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ken Journey?
My name's Ken Journey. I live at 148 West Tattersall Drive in Statesville. And I'm not here to complain. I'm a huge fan of public safety, and will address some fire department issues. The county budget, tax office data, insurance quotes, and Kent Green's fire service reports are sources of unsolicited data that I've shared with Kent and with Mr. Halp, who's on the fire oversight committee. My data supports how you've managed our county fire departments. However, your, a recent growth indicates some changes will improve response and reduce the cost. My graphs highlight cost impact areas such as annexation, combination and/or merger of fire districts and/or fire and rescue districts, the number and location of stations, why some departments have much higher ratios of calls outside their districts, and the benefit of good ISO rates. If Wayside loses its ISO ratings, insurance premiums can increase by more than $400,000 on 2,700 homes in the district. When a taxpayer gets fire and rescue service, plus we get an ISO rating that reduces the cost of insurance by more than we pay in fire taxes, that's a great return on investment. I agree with your Wayside choice, but suggest you review the consultant report and one year of response data that will, and a good response will assure that your decision should be made permanent, and you addressed that this afternoon. Our diverse and growing county has resulted in wide variations in district fire tax revenue, the number of homes, call volumes, and call-to-home ratios. All fire departments have fixed capital costs, plus costs that vary with call volumes. Uh, no satisfying 19 fire departments cannot be easy. Efficiency changes are critical now because of labor costs, which will continue to increase with growth and higher call volume, coupled with a decline in volunteers. A 24/7/365 four-person engine company can cost a million dollars a year, while the cost of a million-dollar fire engine is spread over 20 years. Labor cost will increase. That's why I predict the consultant will recommend efficiency changes, and change is difficult, and people resist change, but change is necessary when circumstances will change, when circumstances have changed, and I look forward to what the consultant has to say about that. I thank you for supporting fire and rescue, and I'll clarify any questions you have on any of the data that I've submitted. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next person signed up is Jerry Starr. He can talk to us about how we can make people happy on fire parks.
That's a tough guy to follow right there, Ken Journey, and I'd much rather be speaking to you on some of those topics, and I'm sure we will in the future. I have a procedural request for the chair before my time starts. If everybody will stand up that's from the Linwood Cottle Creek community, and you hear about the issue on Patterson Farm Road. So I brought some friends with me. I wanted you to, I wanted you to hear from some of them, so instead of everybody that signed up to talk, we do have some select speakers, I'm one of them, so I'm requesting that our time run concurrent with those speakers. So if that's okay.
You're going to do three minutes and have somebody else do three minutes.
Yeah, but if I, if I run over three minutes, I'd like to, I'd like to.
Hand it off.
Have the balance of the time for everybody that signed up.
We'll just, just hand it off to somebody else to finish.
Okay, that'll be fine. So you only want me to speak for three?
Do, do three and then hand it over to somebody else for three.
Okay, so I didn't know if we could use the balance of our time for everybody that signed up.
You can do three and then hand it over to the next person for three.
Okay, all right, so that was my procedural question. So hold on one second, we'll get started.
Can I just add, I think what he's saying is not everybody here needs to speak.
Okay, but everybody signed up.
Probably make it three people.
Okay.
If we could have a little bit longer.
Well, our rules and procedure, if we've got ahead of time, but Madam Attorney, I mean, we're, we need to stick by rules and procedure, correct, or?
That's why I was asking if we could expand the balance of time so that you got a thorough explanation.
I think we could do it in five minutes each.
Just them. You can just say your discretion.
Okay, we'll just.
If there's anyone who wants to yield their time to Jerry, they can.
So some of you all want to yield your time to him?
That have signed up.
Okay.
So we need to.
Yeah, I, I was trying to, I was trying to wordsmith that up, and so I apologize, I'm not the greatest order.
Mr. Chair, I, I think, I think what the lady was saying, that they have about three people that could speak, and if three people spoke for five minutes apiece, I think that would be probably less time.
I just want to make sure that we're not also taken away from anybody else that has another topic they want to address here tonight, so, um, I, you know, it's, yeah, just wanted to make sure.
Okay.
So, um, I guess we're all clear, so I'll go ahead and begin. My name is Jerry Starr. I live at 687 Patterson Farm Road, and I'm coming to you as tonight, speaking in my capacity as a taxpayer and as a, a person that lives on the street. This board turned a partial and allowed it to be annexed by the city of Mooresville on about the 900 block of Patterson Farm Road. It's the Earnhardt Farms property. Is everybody familiar with that? So that's why we're here. I, uh, had started halfing the field questions and answering questions of my, my neighbors because of my capacity at South Iredel, uh, as to what's going on? Why is there a, a city of Mooresville zoning sign? And that led to investigating what was going on, and that was all of our neighbors' first look at what you guys had approved. You guys approved that to be, become an industrial park and let the town utilize it. Is that my understanding, you guys knew that that was going to be, um, an industrial park or an, have an industrial capacity? That area in your own, uh, in your own plan for the 2045 Horizon Plan was supposed to be low, uh, you know, residential, low-density. So that was our first kind of appearance of it. So when we found out that that 400-acre partial just south of Mooresville was going to become an industrial facility, I was shocked. So we went to the zoning meeting as a, as a, as a group, and they turned it down because there was no answer. We, you know, we were there at now the city's mercy. You guys are the only people we can hold accountable or ask questions or, or have anything. You are our, our elected representative. I voted for every one of you up there, so you're my people. They don't care, the town of Mooresville doesn't care what any of these people have to say, because they're, they don't live in the town. But now we're going to be subject to what the town wants with this property. So I'm asking in the future, a procedural change be made, because we can't stop this. I guarantee you, the horse is out of the gate. I've already been told that so many times by different, uh, different officials. So since the horse is out of the gate, what I'm going to ask the county to start doing is if you're going to turn a partial over like that, and you know that it has some sort of huge zoning change, how about you throw up one of your signs? I would have loved to have come up here and addressed what this property was going to turn into, if they were going to do something besides agricultural and low-density residential. That would have been a great opportunity for us to have that. I no longer can get to have that conversation with you guys. We no longer, because we still don't know who's buying the property. I just found out today that it's going to be a data center. But when you don't tell the public anything, and that's, that's what this developer hasn't done along with the town of Mooresville, everybody's worst fears were discussed. Oh, it's going to be nuclear, it's going to be government, it's going to be this. We had no idea, but today I found out. So, um, I, I'd like to find out stuff like that from you guys, the people I can, I can deal with, the people that I can, I can, I can talk to, uh, that are my representatives. The town's been very nice and been very polite. I'm not up here to slander the town. Um, I think they do a lot of great things, but, uh, this was just, it just caught the whole neighborhood off guard. My last topic is the 1070, the 2070 rule that you guys, uh, also changed so that this property could be developed on the watershed. That's my understanding. After talking with the state of North Carolina air quality, um, I want to make sure that all developments that are already currently on that watershed are taken into account. So I want to make sure that when you balance these numbers out, then the city puts this property on here and goes over the impervious, I want to make sure that any development that already sits on that is also included, because that is the state guidelines. And I'm not going to preach to you about state guidelines. You, you guys, I'm sure there's somebody in the, uh, at the county office that knows a lot better than I do. I just want to make sure I bring those things to your attention. And I'm going to close my statement with, thank you for what you do. You guys all have a servant's heart up here, and that's why from one servant's heart to another, um, please make that change so that we know what's coming to our area. Drop a zoning sign. I know you're not required by law, you're only required when you change the zoning, but you guys had some knowledge, and I know you did, so it would have been nice if we all could have made, come up here and, and help guide that decision with you. And with that, um, I'm going to turn my time over to the next individual.
Just state your name and your address for me.
I'm Sarah Deaton, and I am a property owner of 299 through 318 Rustic Road in Mooresville, North Carolina. Um, I'm here, um, representing my husband and all of our neighbors here. So, um, you might have been a little bit surprised that we were all here tonight, unexpected, I'm sure, but probably not as surprised as we were when we found out that you had agreed for this property to be annexed with no communication with us and no discussion. And as our county representatives, that's not what we expect. I think what also surprises us the most is that this annexation, as Jerry just mentioned, and subsequent rezoning requests that has been agreed, or is up for agreement, um, is in direct conflict with your Iredell County 2045 Horizon Plan. So I have that plan right here, and I just wanted to take just a couple minutes and point out some of the inconsistencies with the decision you made and what we find in this plan. So the first thing is, one of the primary goals of this Horizon Plan on page six states, while economic development is encouraged in Iredell County, it needs to be balanced by sound land use planning that protects rural character and agricultural business. This plan also states that it's a long-range policy document that Iredell County leaders, you and staff, should use to inform decision-making related to growth and development. I'll also remind you that the Horizon Plan includes guidance in the form of, of future land use maps, and I have a copy of the future land use map of the Mooresville area, and this property lands right in this green area right here. So my next step was, what does it say about that green area? And here's what it says. It's agricultural and rural conservation tier two. Agricultural and rural conservation tier two lands are intended to provide residential, single-family development that is generally rural in character. And it specifically calls out the southeast side of Mooresville, as Jerry was just pointing out, because it's in a watershed area. And it says, "The intent of these lands is that they will remain rural in character and provide rural residential housing options." It also goes on to say, um, that farming operations and single-family residences are the primary uses. And under jurisdiction, it says agricultural and rural conservation tier two uses will remain in the county's jurisdiction. But that didn't happen. It got annexed. So I, I guess, you know, what I would like to say is that, um, first of all, compliment you and everyone who worked on this plan. It is a phenomenal plan, and it was extremely collaborative. You might recall that you held town halls. You brought in the community and asked for their feedback. You sought input from everyone when this plan was developed, and we all fell in love with it and bought into it. And that's why we're so surprised, because also as a part of this plan is your commitment to continue that collaboration, and again, that didn't happen. So, you know, we were pretty surprised and disappointed, I might add, that when it seems that, quite frankly, money was involved and flashed around, meetings began to be held in secret, NDAs were signed, and the community and the people that are directly affected as adjacent property owners and neighbors of this property were not brought into the fold. So, um, it, it's a plan that I know you're all proud of, and we know now that there is a data center that's being planned for this property that comes with its own set of inherent risk, and I don't have time to get into those details tonight, but we do know that data centers are moving towards nuclear as their source of energy because of clean energy requirements, and they do that in the form of SMRs, and they do not require deep water, which a lot of people think they do. So it's a perfect property for that. And even if they're not going to put nuclear there, it also is a fire hazard, and there's no Mooresville Fire Department within four and a half miles of this center. So I'm coming here today not necessarily to make you feel bad for the decision that you made, but I you made, but I have two asks on behalf of myself and the neighbors. One would be, we would ask you as our county representatives to help us intervene with the town of Mooresville to prohibit the rezoning of this property to industrial and stick to the Horizon 2045 Plan. The second thing is to reiterate what Jerry just said, and that is ask you in the future that you put a process in place that would require annexation matters of this magnitude be brought at a minimum to the adjacent property owners and your constituents. And with that, I thank you as well, and I wish you all Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Anyone else to speak on this matter?
Yes.
Ben Ailer, uh, 121 Rustic Road, Mooresville. Um, I'm actually a new resident to Iredale County. Y'all actually pulled me in from Mecklenburg. Had a farm in Mecklenburg in the Mallory Creek area for close to 200 years, and we actually got taken over by the progress that happened in, uh, the northeast Charlotte Concord Mills area. So, with a little taste of that, we decided to move to where we did off Rustic Road Patterson Farm Road area. And, um, it was a little slice of what I experienced, of me being 46, of what I experienced when I was 10, 12, 13, 15 years old, even 16. And, um, I know whenever it changed in Charlotte from where it become a small town with cornfields and cows and Wallace Dairy Farm and, and everything else that was out there, that when stuff like this popped up and began to rear its ugly face as far as IBM and the research facilities, all the subdivisions, uh, strip malls, uh, grocery stores, which in the, in the grand scheme of things, those were necessities in our area because we would have to drive 30 minutes when I was younger to go to the grocery store. So, but looking back, and it's been almost 30 years, uh, IBM, the research center, all that stuff over there, about a quarter of the buildings in that area are big, huge box buildings that were either bank or data centers, they're empty. There's no, nothing's filling them up, they've got tons of parking, and all the roads and everything around there were built to suit it, but all the people that had jobs there and brought jobs there, they moved away from the community, which in turn, on this side of it, the communities that were built around our farm housed a lot of these jobs that went away. So, we had empty box stores, we had property that was worth, say, $700,000 at the time whenever they built and bought, that 10 years later, it didn't go up in value and went down. And that's, that's okay if the property taxes go down, but I know as far as with this concern of the Earnhardt property, the property taxes are going to go up for us. And one of the things that Charlotte didn't do for us is road improvements. And if this does go through, and I'm speaking for us and the community, we spoke about this, if it does go through, we would like to see significant changes where the county and the city meet to try and help with the traffic and the safety problems on, Jerry said, uh, it used to be 60 years ago, a dirt road.
Yep.
And I have a 16-year-old daughter, a 16-year-old stepson, a 13-year-old daughter, and a 10-year-old stepson, and with them learning to drive and stuff like that, this is, that, that actually is a great area to learn to drive because it's got the modest amount of traffic, and it's also backcountry roads, which is what I learned to drive. But for their safety, if there's going to be something like this that's going to employ a lot of people, the roads need to be improved on the county and the city side. So, that's my concern as far as the Linwood area and, uh, the Patterson Farm area is, if this is going to go through, y'all need to dedicate yourselves to work with the city on county line areas and the city to try and improve roads, intersections, whatever needs to, to happen on that aspect of it. But, um, that's about all I've got. If, uh, Renee, did you want to speak?
I'll be your last one.
Oh, and Merry Christmas.
Hello, my name is Renee Earnhardt. I live on 445 Patterson Farm Road in Mooresville. Mr. Off with Good Evening. Thank you guys for allowing me and all of us to take the floor. I appreciate your time and the position you guys uphold. I know it's not easy, or we all would be vying for a seat at your table. But with that said, and, and to the point that a lot of these folks have made, you have accepted the duty to serve the greater good of the people first and foremost. I have lived in the Highway 3 district for over 30 years, and 23 of those years have been on Patterson Farm Road, tier two of the Horizon Plan, as Sarah had mentioned. And I would comfortably say on Patterson Farm, Patterson Farm Road and adjacent roads, well over 50-plus homes have been built in the past few years. While this has created some congestion, it has not negatively manipulated our rural countryside. We are a community in itself. Patterson Farm Road and surrounding areas has and continues to function just as the Horizon Plan had intended it to. Rural residential homes are and continue to be built without disturbing the space around us. We deserve to be protected as well as preserved as the Horizon Plan implemented it to do as such. What are the significant reasons this zone falls in the nature of tier two? You guys need to ask those questions. Bending the rules for governmental gain never ends well. We look to you to serve as the backbone to our county as a whole. Stand up and protect the preservation of rural communities. The demands of the natural resources today, tomorrow, years from now, where are these from the Army Corps of Engineer? What protocols have been followed to base the decision that will forever alter this land? The list of unanswered questions is very long, and with all due respect, to agree to a significant rezoning that will be life-changing for the lay of the land would be reckless and lack confidence due to the information that's already been provided. And I will say to, um, Ms. Milton, I think when you were talking about the volunteering for the groups, I do hope that when this was presented a couple months ago for you guys to approve this annexation, you all received a lot more information than what we did when we were at Mooresville during the Planning Board Committee, uh, that they presented to have the rezoning put into effect, because I can assure you, we had zero that the applicants acting agent provided, um, with what exactly is going to hear. I think now that Jerry's got a little bit of insight to that, uh, that's a little bit helpful to it. But just asking the questions protecting the rural communities, that's all we ask for. This area, our homes, are the last sliver of agriculture land in the southern end of Iredale County. How do we get to where we're here today? Each of you have that to answer for. Each of you are accountable for the decisions being made that will forever alter this land and will alter our lives. We have livestock, we have horses, pigs, goats, that's why we live there. We just ask you guys to do your due diligence. Others need to do their due diligence. Nothing more than, than that. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else to speak on this matter? I think our next person to speak is Tim Pope.
Uh, my name's Tim Pope, and I live at 1553 Royal Sherker in Statesville. Uh, thank you for your time and opportunity to speak. Uh, I know I've been here before, and you've heard a lot of what I'm going to say again, but, uh, I'm just here based on behalf of the Bay Brute of Iredale County, and also it's very personal to me. Uh, February of 2015, our board met with a member of the Iredale County Recreation Department just over here on the other side of the building when the Recreation Department was here. Uh, we discussed donation of the property to the county. Uh, that day after some discussion, our board voted to donate with a few stipulations. Some were okayed, some were not. And the main reason I'm here still is that there was one that was okayed at that day, and that was our organization would play our league ball free of charge. Now, there doesn't appear to be anything anybody can find that says that so. Uh, you know, when we left there that day, it was supposed to be drawn up with deed and us sign it, and it would be taken care of. Well, when our president signed, you know, we were told we would get a copy of everything. We yet to have a copy, and when you go to look for paperwork, the only thing there's, there is is a deed. So, uh, I don't know what happened, but I know I was there, and I know most of you weren't involved then, but I was there, and to my word, that's the way it was. And back then, when I shook your hand, that was good enough. I didn't need anything signed, but obviously, that's not what happens when you get involved with government officials because it didn't go the way it was supposed to. I mean, we would not have agreed to give you a property worth $281,000 if we couldn't play on it for no charge. I mean, that would be insane. That just makes no sense at all. So, you know, since last time I was here, I've sent some emails out, and I've got some answers back from some, and some I have not, but, you know, I've been told that as a group, you've talked since then and decided not to change the fee structure. I've also been told that that's not so because it has not been discussed as a group. So, I don't know what's happening, but I know the stories don't match. Uh, I was also told that, you know, people in the county are saying it's not fair to not charge us and to charge them. Well, I mean, there's an easy answer to that. They didn't give you a property worth $281,000, we did. And we have yet to receive anything from the county, period, on that. So, you know, I mean, to me, that's just an easy answer. Uh, you know, also, a year or so ago, there was a, group put out something that they were changing basketball, uh, in terms of charging for gym use and that kind of stuff. After a lot of discussion and complaints, then suddenly that was changed and the budget was $115,000 added to the, $1,000 added to the budget to take care of that problem. Also, football disbanded. Since then, I understand you've hired two part-time people to pick football back up and run that program. So, that's great. I mean, that's what we after is use stuff, but, you know, you're helping basketball and football. For some reason, we don't seem to want to help the baseball side of things. Uh, you know, I just want to be fair and recognize the baseball program, especially after we did donate property. I mean, that's the bottom line of it all. We did give. We did give. So, I, I don't know how you can sit there and not agree that we could play with no charge.
Mr. Pope, your time's up.
Huh?
Your time's up.
My time's not up.
Yes, sir.
Three, no. I get three minutes, it ain't counting.
It's already went to three and reset. It run over.
Reset.
Over three and reset. Went over three.
It didn't, but, you know, I know that's, that's the way this goes.
Sir, thank you.
Yeah.
Anybody else here to speak for tonight that hadn't signed up? I'll close the public comment period, and now this will run us down to Commissioner comments, and I'd like to start with, uh, Commissioner Hap on this side.
Everybody, uh, have a Merry Christmas and a safe and Happy New Year. Can you remind us on that Patterson Farm Road, we approved a economic incentive? Is that what we did for that, for Mooresville?
Um, that, that project did not come to us for a rezoning. So, that, that was never, it was never asked for us to rezonate, never asked for us to approve to have it rezoned. That project initially came to us through, uh, Iredale County Economic Development Commission, and it was an economic development project in the Cottle Creek area. It was not site-specific because they were looking at various sites. It was not site-specific. The board looked at the project on its merits based on our incentive agreement, and the board agreed to make an offer from the incentive agreement. Again, it was a competitive, um, it was a competitive project. There were various sites throughout the country that they were looking at. We were not aware of any, a specific site. They were looking at various sites in our county and various sites throughout various states. So, um, but at, at no point in time did that property come to us for us to release, to be annexed by the town of Monxville, uh, town of Monxville, town of Mooresville, or rezoned. Um, it came to us as an economic development project. Is that what you're asking?
Yes. And I just wanted to say too that when people petition the municipalities to be annexed, that's between the property owner and the municipality, whether it's State for Mooresville, Troutman, Harmony. We have no authority to stop an annexation that's requested by the property owner. Like, if you wanted your property annexed by Mooresville, you would petition the town of Mooresville to annex your property. We have no authority or control over that. So, I just wanted people to understand, we had limited information that wasn't site-specific. I didn't remember the details on it, but this is the first I've heard of it. I, I haven't talked to anybody before tonight, but I just wanted you guys to know, if a municipality has petitioned to be annexed, for a property to be annexed by the property owner, we don't have authority over that.
We can't stop any annexation.
We can't stop that, just so you know, authority-wise. Our 2045 has a plan, but if the property owner petitions Mooresville to annex that property, then Mooresville's in control of the, of the zoning jurisdiction, not us. It wouldn't matter what our 2045 said. So, I just wanted to let you know that as a matter of fact. You know, if we're in control of it, then we would look at the 2045, but if it's annexed, that jurisdiction goes to Mooresville.
I'm sorry, I just have to ask, because when we went to the Mooresville meeting, they specifically said, "We don't have control of this." The county commissioners.
I have control over that property until it's annexed, but once they annex the property, all the zoning jurisdiction goes to Mooresville.
To them.
It's not us. I mean, at that particular point, if it had not been annexed yet, I'm assuming that may be the answer, I don't know, but if they annex the property, all jurisdiction goes to Mooresville.
Then if Mooresville Planning and Zoning denied it, then why isn't it just dead?
It should be, unless they denied the annexation. Did they deny the annexation?
Correct. They're bringing it back up because they denied it on lack of information. The developer brought nothing other than he brought a request for it to be zoned industrially. So, they want to industri, they want to make this an industrial site in the middle of, uh, the woods and cow pastures.
They led us to believe anything?
I was told it came before y'all, I, it's been told that it came before y'all under economic development, and y'all had the first crack at, at making those incentives. So, I don't.
Well, we have a, we have a incentive package that we approved based on criteria of incentives.
It was definitely going to be commercial.
It was, the watershed mainly was what come to us, wasn't it?
It, it came to us as an economic development project that was not site-specific.
Right. We didn't know what specific site.
They could have put it anywhere in the county.
Well, that, if, if they annex it, they can. I mean, if the property, if, if the property owner wants it annexed, we have no authority to stop that.
I, I'm aware of that.
Okay.
Saying is, is y'all had, y'all had notice of site.
No, she just said it was not site-specific.
And, and, and I'll, I'll say one thing, we, we really shouldn't be getting into a, a back and forth, but I will say this. The reason it came to us initially was because there was a, it was in a, we knew it was in the Cottle Creek, Cottle Creek watershed.
Right.
And there was an issue regarding would we approve an allocation for a project in that watershed? We did not know where in that watershed the project was, but it would take an allocation to be in that watershed area. That's how it came to us first, because it was, it would take a watershed allocation. Um, the 2070 was not in our jurisdiction, that was legislated.
Right.
But also, I think it, what public needs to understand, and I'm jumping around here, and, and we're not supposed to be in a, we're not supposed to be in question, the, the thing is, is we don't, when we're told something in closed session, that's law. We can't, we can't tell y'all. And, and when you were making a statement earlier, why can't we do? Because there's so many businesses that want to come to, to Iredale County, and we're blessed because if y'all don't know this, and I, I hope you already know this, that that Earnhardt property can have 8,000, no, 2,000 houses, 2,000 houses on it.
634.
Is it 634? With city sewer and water?
That's what the, that's what their representative said.
Let's keep our meeting more for the Commissioner comments if we can, please, because we're going to get way down a hole here. We can talk to all y'all afterwards and stuff.
Absolutely.
One-on-one, that way we're not getting anything. Gene, you got anything?
Try to make those comments explain that. Um, but basically just hope everybody has a safe and happy New Year and Merry Christmas.
Vice Chair.
Yes, um, I'm going to get it back on to the positive side on a lot of things we get to do with this. Y'all are getting to see a lot of the negative side that we have to deal with and the challenges we face. When I was all excited. When I was all excited, and I still am excited about this role, no matter how difficult it becomes, it's an honor to serve. It truly is. And we don't take our decisions lightly. We're... You're looking at a group of folks that are all natives to this area, born and raised, and when you talk about things and the change, it hurts my heart to see some of the change that has happened to our community. And I always had this, um, perception that when you got to be in elected seat, because I've been on that side as well, facing heavy polluting industry. When I sat on that side, I thought, "I'm going to tell them what's right. I'm going to preach them, and I'm going to make them stop everything." What I found out on this side of the seat is there's legal allowable parameters, and just because I know what I think is right may not be what the law says we can and we can't do. Do I get frustrated when citizens come to me and say, "Hey, why can't you stop this?" I want to stop certain things, I truly do. I want to slow things down. I want to be methodical. I want to have a vision for Aridale County that makes sense for the citizens, whether you've been here two weeks, you've been here your entire life. And it's difficult when there's not a legal allowable way. And I say that each time because there's property rights, which I support property rights, too, because I don't want to sit there and tell you what you can and you can't do on your property, unless it's like the poor gentleman who has trees and planes and boats and things that are piling up. But, how do we make the decisions on what we can and we can't do when municipalities have their legal rights? It's complex and it's interwoven. But what it boils down to is, I want each and every citizen in our county to go home to a space that's their sanctuary, that they feel safe in, that they want to raise their family in. And how do we come to that? How do we make those decisions? And I agree, there needs to be the conversation between the municipalities and the county. Sometimes there is, and sometimes there isn't. Then we're faced with the idea of, if things are sold, what is that land going to look like a year from now, two years from now, 10 years from now? We don't have any control over the roads. We have no impact fees. There are times when I leave this building going, "Our hands are tied. What can we do for the people who come to us?" We talk to the elected officials that are in those towns. You know, it's hard to be able to say, "We'll fix everything." Is there a way? I can guarantee you, this group's going to sit here, and we're going to try to figure out the best way we can, because your words aren't falling on deaf ears. There were times when I sat there on this, like I said, the other side before, I understood more of what goes on on this side. I felt like my words were falling on deaf ears. But it's when you stick together as a community and you share your concerns with us, like you did tonight respectfully, it really makes a difference. We will work hard for you. We're doing our best we possibly can. When we have the conversation, people call us, we would try to answer it as honestly and as ethically and as properly as we can. We truly do. And thank you for being respectful of my chance to rant and say how important it is that we do the best we can possibly do, and your concerns are very valid to us. I also want to let you know, one of the... Some of the most important things to me, too, is we get to attend EMS and ECOM banquets. We get to see our teams recognized for life-saving. So many different things, and you know this, Jerry, from your... From your fire department, it's daily, the emergency services, um, how much trauma there is, the growth. More people, more to care for, more concerns. But when we can celebrate those who have had the opportunity to be recognized by their departments, that's huge. I visit the schools, I see the kids, I see our future. We celebrate in this Christmas season when we all say, "Hey, this is a beautiful time of year." We need a piece of this time of year every day in our heart, year-round. We truly do. Um, I listen to DSS board meetings, I'm on that, and that was been recent. And a lot of times when we have our updates and comments, it's in reference to where we've been the last two weeks. When you sit and listen to what goes on, we live in a wonderful place, but we've got our challenges, too. Um, I just want everyone to know, too, how important it is for us to work as a team to continue the conversations, and I appreciate staff. I want everyone to be able to take a breath, even when times are tough, to celebrate your family, hug those, love those within near or far, and celebrate each other through the holiday season, and I appreciate your time.
Mr. Stroud.
The first 20 years of my adult career, I worked for the... An organization that's practiced chaos every day, the United States Army. The next 20 years, I fought... I fought the, uh... One of the most convoluted systems in fighting the VA in helping veterans obtain their benefits for service-related injuries. So, after 40 years of those two, I said, "Let me see what I can do here." And I will tell you, the VA's a much simpler process now. Um, I will tell you to this issue with property. As I said here, some of y'all probably saw the... Did I miss something, that I forget something scare in my face? Because, uh, as I heard the young lady say, "We have, um, farm animals, we have..." So do I. And I will tell you, this... We have zero, as Commissioner Help said, we have zero ability to stop annexation if a property owner requests it. They go to the town, the town says, "Yes, we want it," it never comes to us, we never see it. Um, that's frustrating, that's scary. Um, that... So then, if it's annexed, we don't get to see the zoning. Um, yes, we did get to hear a non-specific. Um, and I will tell you, that is a, um... It's a very frustrating process to be sitting as elected official and feel helpless to stop that train. Um, this board, uh, early on, was invited by local... By a local municipality board. Uh, for those familiar, the term ETJ, Extended Territorial Jurisdiction, basically, uh, where we agree to give a municipality the ability to do the planning and zoning, but still be a county property. This town was... This board was courted by a municipality board. And I will tell you, this board looked squarely at that municipality and then sent the message that ETJ is a four-letter word, um, that we don't say in our house. Uh, we have not approved a single ETJ since... That I remember, since this board, um, was brought together.
December of '22.
December of '22. Um, because I will tell you, I think every single person up here does care about the property rights. We attempted, through recommendations, through the 2045 Horizon Plan, through our farmland preservation, to at least consider. And I went to those town meetings. I attended one of the ones in Mooresville with the 2045 that you referenced, too. And one of the things, I even heard folks from Mooresville say, "Please don't let North Aridale look like what Mooresville looks like today." We heard that coming from the south. You know, I'm from here, from that north end of the county. I get you, I hear you. Um, as we tried to do that, you know, we got a block... We got blocked, uh, from any potential to do anything by our North Carolina Legislature, who said, "We can't restrict lot size." Uh, because now we're infringing on property rights for somebody to be able to sell to the highest bidder. I hear you. This is a frustrating process, and, uh, the only thing we hear is the economic development piece that they have the full decision, um, to make, and we did not know the site-specific. I promise you that. We did not. We knew it was in that watershed, but we did not know the site-specific. The other thing I want to address is I have a grandson who plays, uh, Babe Ruth. Yes, there was a donation made of roughly $230,000, $240,000, um, nine, 10 years ago. That has now morphed and turned into a huge project that is about a $34 million sports facility that's for the entire county to use. Every taxpayer in this county, money's been paid towards them playing. My grandson will play on that field. This board has not looked to try to recoup any of the cost of that $34 million. You can't play enough Little League games or Babe Ruth games to get there. But in order to keep the tax rates low, and we have one of the lowest rates in the state, at this point, we're talking about a $10 per game per hour, and a Babe Ruth game is limited to one hour. You got to have a minimum of nine players. Most players, most teams have 10. So, you're talking 20... 20 players playing for one hour, for one field. That's 50 cents per child, per game. Unless it's a night game, and it could be potentially as high as $1.50 per child, per game. This board's been villainized that we're trying to, uh, squash youth athletics. We support it. The previous boards had looked at that park, it was going to be a phase-in process. Phases cost time, phases cost money. We said, "Let's get it done." Back to what we said, it's a pay-as-we-go, let's get it done, let's pay. Let's don't have the debt, let's don't pay a mortgage on $40 million. So, we put it out there, and we held off other things so we could complete that project. We set up a scholarship for all children of all sports, that if the families cannot afford to pay, they can apply for that scholarship. It is not set up like other ones. You have to qualify for it. It's not where you'll get it, and then if you didn't qualify, we're going to try to refund, get money back from you. It's set up as pure to help with that situation. In a complete year, for the spring games that I believe, if I'm correct, they play 10 games, at 50 cents a... At 50 cents a game, we're talking $5 for a season per child. I don't... I don't think that's unreasonable, but if it's unreasonable to some families, that's why we do have those scholarships. So, I will tell you, this is the hardest thing in the world. Everybody, Jerry Starr comes here and he makes great presentations, and I'm sure there were things that Jerry always would like to have just a little bit more. But the problem is, the word "free" means somebody else paid it. There's no such things free. Somebody else had to pay it. In order to make everything free, we can raise the property tax rate. I'm a taxpayer first, not a commissioner first. That's not what I want to do. So, my goal here, as we do things, is to mitigate and keep the costs as low as possible and provide the most services, um, with the least impact. I wish everybody here a very Merry Christmas. I will be here if you have anything. I hope, uh... I would love to see us to go back 20 years, um, but we all know that's not, uh, the way. So, Merry Christmas to everyone, enjoy your family, don't take things for granted.
Mr. Brandt.
You know, and a lot of people don't know this, I grew up on Highway 3. I was born there. And when I was born, I'm old, and, uh, it was all farmland. I'm a farmer today. I'm one of the largest landowners in this area right here. I farm 1,000 acres. I love farming. I would like to say we're going to keep them from doing it, as we've already said. You know, municipalities look at things different than we do, and you got to understand, the county, we, the county, you know, our money goes to build schools, to build fire departments, to do things. Municipalities, they don't have to build a school. They send their kids to our schools, and... But we have to pay for that. So, that's why you get double-beamed a lot of times in the municipalities, because they got other things they want to do. But, you know, they blame us for everything. It's kind of like a kid's game. You know, every time I turn around, they say, "Well, they said y'all..." It came to y'all. And I tell people, and they think I'm lying to them. And I say, "Guys, you need to come to our meetings and understand what we do and what we can do." Like I said about the closed session, you know, we didn't know where it was going to go, but when we heard about it, far as the tax break, you know, we're looking at an industry that could keep our taxes lower in this county, you know, because it's better than having 600 homes, and if Mooresville has it their way, they'll put 2,000, because you can put four per area. But, you know, they... Municipalities, and I say this in a nice way, that they don't care about anything but taxes. And, you know, we'd rather keep it all farmland and level it out and get Jerry what he needs for his fire department, because this... You know, all these fire departments are safety, all these EMS are safety, and our sheriff's department. You know, we... We take care of our sheriff's department. But if y'all look in some of these municipalities, their officers make 30% more than our officers in our county, and we cover, I don't know how much more land value... Land mass, but, you know, we cover a lot here. And we're lucky, we're a rich county, and it's good and bad. I don't know how many were born here, but, uh, like I said, when I was born here, it was a poor county, and that dang lake out there. They had that idea to put that lake there, and that just... That has killed all of us, me, living, born here. And, you know, I feel your pain, I really do. But my thing is, is be careful what you wish for, because we've... We had one incident in Stateville, the guy, they wanted to hold back this one piece of property, and the guy, the owner said, "Well, I'll just put houses there." And the people said, "Okay." And then they just found out how much traffic it was going to have, thousands, and they said, "No, we decided we'd rather have the industry." So... So, I don't know if they're going to get that put there, we don't know. But we did, we all sat at a meeting, and when they started talking about the ETJ, it was... We all looked at each other, and it was like, "We just wasted a morning," because we knew we were not going to do that, and we're not going to do it. I don't think it... I think all of us, I can speak for all of us in certain things, and we're dead set. We don't want to give away any property. But if you do volunteer annexation...
We can't talk.
No, we don't have a thing to do with that, and that's... And you know what, though? And I think this nicely, that's the beauty of being an American, because you have your right to do what you want with your land, except pay taxes on it, you got to pay taxes on it, but, uh, and I'm against that, too, but I still pay my taxes. So, but I appreciate you, I do, I wish, you know... I don't know what the fix is, but keep going to the meetings, raise Holy Canes, because it doesn't hurt. And, you know, if you live in the city limits of Mooresville, tell them politicians down there, you're not going to vote for them. But it works, that part works. But I appreciate you and Merry Christmas.
County managers report.
Absolutely. Um, I do have one thing, I did misspeak, and I do want to correct that for the record. When this economic development project first came to us, it came to us in the Back Creek watershed.
Right.
And I'm sorry, I misspoke. I said Cottle Creek, that was not true. When it was first presented to us, and it was presented to us first, um, our Economic Development Commission presented it to us and said it was in the Back Creek watershed. And the question was, "This is the merits of the project, it was not site-specific. We were told what watershed it was in, here's the merits of the project. Would you be willing to release the $10.70 allocation for this specific project?" And the board looked at it on its merits, looked at the economic development criteria and policy, and said yes. At that point, and that was before Mooresville ever got involved, because if we didn't release it, it couldn't happen.
We did it with stipulations, though.
Well, yes. So, um, and then at that point, economic development went to Mooresville. And when they went to Mooresville and talked about it, then it was realized that it was not in the Back Creek watershed, it was in the Cottle Creek watershed. So, I'm sorry, I misspoke on that. Um, I forgot, we went back and forth on which watershed it was in. Um, so, we agreed to release the additional acreage for the merits of that project in the Back Creek. They went to Mooresville, Mooresville agreed. Um, it came back, the Economic Development Commission came back to us and said, "It was our mistake. It's not in the Back Creek watershed, it's in the Cottle Creek watershed." So, still, same project. After all of that, and the company had started the process with the town of Mooresville, then it became more site-specific. then it became more site-specific. And it was going through the process with Mooresville, the annexation, the request, and all of that. When we first heard it, when it came to us first, it came to us in the Back Creek watershed. So, and I apologize. I said Cottle Creek. That is incorrect. It came to us in Back Creek. Then it was clarified, it was in Cottle Creek.
Just understand our confusion on that, 'cause it, you're, we're catching all that kinda second-hand.
I, I know, but I wanted to correct that for the record, 'cause I said Cottle Creek, and that was wrong.
I completely understand.
It was Back Creek. So...
I appreciate you taking, manager, taking the time to take us through that.
I, I own it. So, um, so the details are important, especially when we're on the record. So, um, I just wanna make sure, it came to us in Back Creek. We approved it on the merits. We agreed to do the ten-seventy. Through the process, it was changed to twenty-seventy. Um, and then it came back saying it's not in Back Creek, it's in Cottle Creek. It had already gone to Mooresville, and we have to work together, the county and Mooresville. If it's anticipated to be in a juris, a municipal jurisdiction, the two have to work together through the incentive process, and then it becomes more site-specific at that, as it goes down the, the road. So I apologize. It was Cottle. It came as Back Creek, and then it switched to Cottle Creek. So that was my misstatement, and I apologize for that. So...
When you say the merit, what were the merits?
We did know investment. We did know, um, anticipated jobs. We did know things of that nature. We also knew it was competitive, and quite frankly, it was a pie-in-the-sky deal, because it was incredibly competitive, and we probably wouldn't get it. So we knew those things. And then as we go through the process, we would, we would find out more information, um, to see. And so projects still may not happen if it doesn't get rezoned, but we don't get to make the decision of the rezoning. That's not a county decision.
We understand that.
So we don't, we don't get to make that decision of rezoning. So anyway, I did wanna correct that for the record, because I did misspeak when I said Cottle Creek.
Can you get the County Manager's report and get that knocked out?
Yes. So, um, the only thing for County Manager's report is just to make sure everybody understands about the closures for the holidays. Um, the county will be closed on Tuesday, December twenty-fourth, Thursday, the twenty-sixth, and, um, or, excuse me, through Thursday, the twenty-sixth.
Quiet in the chamber, please. Quiet, please.
We will reopen on Friday, the twenty-seventh. So, um, and I just want to, again, say thank you to our finance staff for a clean audit and all of their hard work. Um, I don't think anybody realizes the magnitude of work that goes into the audit process and what they put, not just finance, but all of our other departments through, to go through that audit process. And I'm, I'm very thankful for our team and another clean audit.
Anything else, ma'am?
No, sir. That's all.
Okay, going down the list, we did have a closed session in far, as far as attorney-client. Our client general statute one forty-three dash three eighteen, eleven A three. And it brings us down to the very end. I'd like to ask for a motion to adjourn. I make a motion. Motion by Commissioner Brown. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned, and Merry Christmas.